Welcome to Prost Talk. This is a 2021 candidates conversation. We are attempting to reach out to the different individuals who are running for office. The two offices, I believe, in the two communities that we serve, Whitman and Hanson, Selectmen and School Committee always seem to be the races that folks most want to hear from the candidates, whether there's a race or not. Today, we're going to be speaking with Daniel Stroutman. He is a candidate for the Hanson, Whitman-Hanson Regional School Committee, one of the Hanson seats that will be up. Actually, I think it's only the one seat, which is being, it's open because the current chairman, Bob Hayes, is not seeking reelection. So in fact, there are folks who are running for that seat. Daniel is one of those individuals. Daniel, thank you very much for joining us for this conversation today.
Thank you for having me.
You got it. For those who are either new to town government, or maybe they don't know who you are, be kind enough to tell us a little bit about yourself.
So my name is Daniel, of course. I went through the Whitman-Hanson School District. I've been in Hanson my whole life. I live on Ponsett Street, actually. So I went through McQuan, back when McQuan was still operational, onto Indian Head, Hanson Middle, onto the Whitman-Hanson Regional High School. So my entire time, my entire school career, my entire life was spent in this town.
Okay. Have you ever, have you ever held office prior? Have you ever been appointed or any civic groups that you belong to that you want to share with the viewers?
I've never held a town office. I'm 24, so still relatively early on into all of this for me. I have done community service in the past through the Young Marines and Old Colony. It's a youth program focusing on, you know, honor, discipline, leadership, responsibility overall. I helped out at one of our local churches. From there, I actually did some community service at Camp Kawani, watching people's kids during a cancer fundraiser.
Why are you running for school committee or seeking to be an elected official? You're a young gentleman, but it's good to see that our younger folks are looking to be involved with their community.
So really, it just comes down to, I want to make sure that the education that we provide in this district continues to be top-class quality education. I want to make sure that the value of it doesn't depreciate. I want to make sure that our taxpayers at the same time are being represented and overall respected.
Okay. The school budget assessment funding method continues to be a major issue. I know that there was a recent forum held to share details on a proposition two and a half override. The town of Hanson is embarking on, they're gonna take a vote at town meeting, and depending on how town meeting goes, it'll go on the May 15th ballot, the town election ballot. And that amount is for $1.85 million. A lot of folks see it as because of a shift in, instead of per pupil assessment, now it's a different formula. What's your understanding of it?
So I think that a lot of difficulty in swallowing that number for people comes from the fact that when we change from the percentage of pupils method to the statutory or some know it wealth-based method of assessment, the portion of the assessment that Hanson became responsible for was raised by $1.35 million. So of that $1.85 million that Hanson needs to come up with for this budget, we have $1.35 million of its origin right there. And I think that a lot of people have felt that maybe town officials have been deceptive about that. They've been unable to just put it clear as day what it is, talk about it for what it is, you know? That's the majority of that $1.85 amount. It's right there. It's right there for everyone to see. And so I think that a lot of people are gonna have some difficulty when it's clear to all of us where so much of that number is coming from, yet we're told that we're going to have to cut our emergency services, our police, our fire, our highway department, all of these essential, very important services. And of course, education's important as well. But when we hear that we're gonna lose, you know, four, six firefighters, police officers, that's a big number in other departments, you know, some departments losing $600,000 if this override doesn't pass, when, again, a lot of this comes back to the change in the assessment method and the school system as a whole.
What are your concerns about the fiscal 2022 budget? And we could take this in two answers. The first one, I would look towards the 2022 school budget. What's your understanding of it? Have you had a chance to listen to some of the discussions as it has been, you know, as it's been vetted out? And the second part of it would be the town and the town's budget.
So for the school budget, I do keep up to date on the school committee meetings. For the school's budget, something that I actually just brought up at the meeting that took place on the 20th, where all the department heads answered questions, was the fact that originally, the assessment for Hanson, well, for the district, I should say, was actually higher. I believe it was about $700,000, over, over $700,000 had been taken off of the assessment. Of that, Hanson's portion of that $700,000 reduction was about $305,000. This, of course, that reduction happened after the override figure had already been sorted out. So my question at that meeting, which, if anyone's seen it, my question was, as that number is being reduced by $305,000 for Hanson's assessment, will that override reflect that? Will the override also be reduced by $305,000? And the answer that I got was, no, it won't be because that number was already figured in, which to me was a little strange because, you know, that the reduction happened well after that number was figured out. And I was told that they leave a sort of leeway for some sort of estimation as to how, you know, it will cover it. Oh, don't worry, we factored that in, that that might happen. And to me, and I'm sure to a lot of other people as well, you know, that's quite a happy coincidence if Mr. Simonak went back and was able to find these places that took to cut funding to try and bring that number down. And it just so happened to be the $305,000 that, you know, ended up being reduced. That's a very happy, happy coincidence if it managed to be the right amount.
You know, here we are. We are in the middle of a global pandemic, and you are running for office towards the tail end of, hopefully, we're hoping that the tail end of this pandemic, COVID-19. You have concerns as to giving a proper education, being able to get sufficient funding, that you're not going to be looking to cut budgets in 2023 or 2024 if you are elected? Give me your thoughts.
Right. So as far as the pandemic goes, I think that the first thing that we're gonna have to address with that are the obvious learning losses. I know they've happened. You know they've happened. They're clear as day to everyone. You know, some of these kids have been out of school for over a year now. And I say out of school, of course, they've had some degree of schooling online. But we do know that online schooling isn't quite the same as in person. There's definitely been a learning loss. I think first and foremost, we need to assess exactly what that learning loss has been. We need to, you know, really quantify it properly. If that means doing some research, getting some studies done to do that, I, you know, I think first and foremost, that's what needs to be done. I'll happily work with the other members of the school committee. I know Fred Smalls is up for election in Whitman. It'd be great, great to work with him on that, should he secure his position. We want to make sure that whatever funding we're putting forward, of course, it all comes back to this as being used properly. It needs to be used responsibly. It needs to be a balanced budget. Regardless of what learning losses have been incurred, we need to identify them so the right amount of money is being put forward. At the end of the day, we're here for the students. We're also here for the taxpayers to make sure that they're being respected.
So double the details in my next question, and that is, is when you're looking at the budget. You know, and I'm curious, as far as, are you kind of following and seeing if, in fact, the committee is aiming for a level-funded budget or a level services budget? Or trying to get, you know, get beyond that to continue to grow the program and be able to offer specialty things or offer things that other communities are offering their children? Give me, give me your thoughts.
I think that, as I've seen firsthand, something that some representatives on the school board always go back to is a sort of equity. Equity means identifying specific needs of specific children, making sure that no one's being left behind. And in that regard, I agree with that. I think that it's important that as early on as possible, we are identifying the shortcomings of specific students so we can give them the proper education that they need. In that regard, I, you know, the funding needs to be there for that, absolutely. I think that that's certainly something that other school committee members and other elected representatives in general have talked about. Sometimes, I think that a lot of people have the fear that sometimes it really just comes down to lip service. Just saying it doesn't mean that, you know, anything is being done. I believe that it's important to make sure that while we are, again, identifying these problems and putting them first and foremost, making sure that the funding is available for them, that we don't go overboard, we don't overkill the budget here. Again, some people might be of the opinion, and we heard this at the town meeting last year, where the assessment method was actually changed. We heard that a lot of people stand up in front of everyone and say, just fund the school. Just fund the school, over and over. Just fund the school. They didn't really care about the numbers. They didn't really care about, you know, if the funds were being used appropriately. It was just fund the school. And of course, I understand that parents want to make sure that their students are getting quality education. Of course, that's something that I'm here to fight for. But to me, it isn't always as simple as just fund the schools. We need to make sure that the funds that we are appropriating are being used responsibly. And more so, those funds need to be used to their maximum effectiveness. You know, an extra $100,000 used effectively goes a much longer way than $100,000 just frivolously thrown around into raises and, you know, just positions that may or may not be the most effective way to go about it.
If I could ask you, and I plan on asking your opponent the same question. As a new candidate, were you being someone seeking the school committee seat, representing, being a representative of Hanson, what's gonna come with this if you are successful, is a gravitational pull? You're gonna have that gravitational pull to do, to do what's best for the students and be able to get the most bang for your buck. You're also gonna have that gravitational pull from the residents who do not want to see their taxes go up and who want to see the line towed when it comes to keeping, you know, without rates skyrocketing. You know, it's okay where the annual assessment, you try to do the best you can, but you're gonna have to find a happy medium. Are you prepared for that?
You know, I believe that I am. Two, two important points, very important points in the campaign that I'm running here are balance and transparency. First and foremost, the balance between strong, effective education and, like I said before, respecting the taxpayers. That's the big issue there. And in that regard as well, transparency is going to be important to both of those things. Because, you know, there are a lot of people in Hanson, as you said, that at the end of the day, just don't want that number to go up, no matter what. We need to be transparent. I need to reach out to those people. And if elected, I will reach out to those people. We're going to have a conversation about those issues, of course, and I am going to assure them that any amount of money that we have to appropriate for the schools, if funding has to go up, is going to be used appropriately and with respect to them and the values of our constitution. At the end of the day, that's really what it comes down to. They want to know that their money isn't being wasted, and I am prepared to offer them exactly that. We're going to open lines of communication. We're going to have that talk. People aren't going to feel as if they're not being represented, which at the moment, that's how a lot of them feel.
So we have an interesting dynamic that's happening here in the district, not only with this particular committee, but also in the communities. Whether you're aware of it or not, the town of Hanson actually just hired a new interim town administrator because the town administrator is now working with the school system as, I believe, like a budget analysis or has been hired on, per se, by the school district. And the town of Whitman, not that that's necessarily your concern, they also have a new town administrator. And on top of that, experiences you had on the school committee has decided not to seek reelection. Hence, this opening, this open seat that's up for grabs. What are you looking to do if you are elected to try to fill that void, but also get acclimated with the newer members of those communities?
Sure. So in regards to the town administrators, the changing of town administrators, it was actually Don Byers, a member of the school committee, who brought forth some concern that whether or not it's, the problems are actually there. The, there is an appearance of improprieties, an appearance of conflict of interest when the towns continue to pull their hired officials from elected and appointed positions. Of course, you know, Mr. Stanbrook was our town administrator. He became the business director at the high school. Ms. Green was the the, thank you, the assistant town administrator in Whitman and is now our interim town administrator in Hanson. Again, whether or not there is any conflict of interest there, that's not for me to decide at the moment. That's not what I'm trying to claim. But it definitely gives the appearance of it. So, and people have voiced that concern. Again, a member of the school committee voiced that concern. And when I heard that, you know, and as well as plenty of other people, I'm sure, heard that and said, you know, yeah, that's an issue. That's an issue. If it's being brought up at all, that's an issue. It's something that needs to be taken into consideration. I know the background behind it. I know the situation with how many, how quickly the candidates for our business director at the high school were trimmed down. I know only four of them got back to us. I know only two of them had interviews. I know all of that. But at the end of the day, it doesn't change how it looks in the end. And so everyone needs to be aware of that. As far as that goes, like I said, it's not for me to decide. I'm perfectly willing to work with anyone who's willing to work with me. I'm gonna reach out. I'm not burning any bridges. I'd hope that no one else is with me. If I'm elected, we're gonna work with those people. We're gonna, as I said before, as far as transparency goes, we're gonna open lines of communication with the community and with other elected representatives, you know. We're in a town agreement with Whitman, so that means communication with Whitman as well. We're all supposed to be working toward the ultimate same goal here. We want that quality education for all of our students, Whitman and Hanson. That's what our agreement comes back to. So we're definitely, we're gonna talk to them. We're gonna make sure that we're all on the same page. And at the end of the day, we're gonna find a solution that works out best for all of us.
Interesting enough, because it was something that you had touched upon earlier in regards to town meeting. When the shift was made from per pupil to statutory, there were a lot of people who were upset. A lot of residents were upset. You had elected officials who were upset in the town of Hanson. There was, I believe, even a committee that was formed to discuss deregionalizing. Correct. Share your thoughts on the possibility that there could be a strong movement towards deregionalizing. Is this something that you'd be in favor of, or is this something that you would discourage?
It's something that we need to look at. We owe it to our, as elected officials, if I become one of them, we owe it to our constituents to hear them out. If deregionalizing is something that they want us to consider, then we absolutely at least have to consider it. At the end of the day, we don't know at the moment whether that, if we were to deregionalize, of course, we can't realistically deregionalize anything beyond pre-K through eight. So if pre-K through eight was deregionalized, of course, we would risk losing our Chapter 70 funding that is shared by Whitman and Hanson. It's about five and a half million dollars that goes toward our funding our schools. Of course, we would lose that. So really, I think that a lot of taxpayers in Hanson have felt that after that meeting last year, our best interests aren't exactly being represented. So of course, they're upset. Of course, they want to look at the options, and I totally agree that we should look at all the options. I also believe that we should weigh all of the options. What I would like is a study to be done to weigh the effects of deregionalizing. Where, of course, that's gonna come down to losing some funding with that Chapter 70 money. But we're gonna have to see exactly how much money we're gonna be out in the end. We're gonna have to weigh that against, I guess, what some people would consider, some renewed control over our own schools. Because, and it ties into the fact that we're looking at a six-four split on the school committee in favor of Whitman. We're creeping closer and closer toward, you know, we've already passed our line for off of percentage of pupils. We're paying more than our percentage of pupils according to the wealth-based method now, as everyone knows. People are feeling in Hanson that we deserve more representation on that school committee, that it should be a five-five split on the school committee. And again, that's one of the things that leads back to people not feeling properly represented. So I think that deregionalizing is something that we're going to look at. We certainly haven't heard the last of it, you know. A committee was formed to look, to investigate that already, as you said. I think that we, again, we need to invest in studying the effects of this a bit more. We want that information out in the open. We want some transparency as to what's been done with this committee so far because we haven't really heard a whole lot. It's been mentioned, almost as if to remind us that it's still there. It does in fact exist. But for a lot of people, that's not enough. We want to know what's going on with it. At some point, some analyst has been involved with it. So we want to know more about it, definitely. If, you know, if we've, if Hanson, the people of Hanson decide that that's something that they want to do, as an elected official, I would have to respect my constituents' opinions on that. I'm here to represent them, not to force my will on them. Unfortunately, some elected officials think that's their position to do, to force their will on their constituents. That's not how we operate here. So really, yeah, it comes back to that. If that's what they want, after we do those studies and find out exactly how much we'd be losing and what we'd be gaining, if that's what they want to do, then that's what we would do.
Have you had a chance to engage with the voters? I know it's been difficult because of COVID-19. But have you had a chance to talk with residents and get a feel as to what their concerns are and what they feel the issues are regarding your race?
Sure. Of course, as you said, it's not exactly what I, what it could be, what I wish it was. I'd love to be out there shaking hands every day and getting to know people a bit more, but, you know. People don't even have the same opinions about masks right now. I'm always scared to get within six feet of people, just based on what their reaction's gonna be. So I have talked to people as much as I've been able to. I think that the COVID learning loss is a big thing, the thing that is, people are concerned about. I'm hearing that one come up a lot, and again, I agree. Of course, people are very concerned about the override. People are concerned about the way, you know, that amount was determined. People are concerned about, again, just the general school funding. They're concerned about being sure that we can guarantee that quality education and finding that balance. Those are all, all the things we've touched on so far really are definitely the biggest issues in this town. You know, I've talked to some other people. I've heard people voice concerns about specific issues within the school, which, again, that's something that we always need to look into. I've had people reach out to me about concerns that education might be too politicized, which, again, is something I completely agree with. I believe that education has become too politicized. But, you know, that's, that's an issue. Of course, I think that something needs to be done about it, but they're only, you know, we have to go about it the way we can go about it. I think that definitely overall, the biggest issues that we're being faced with according to the voters in this town, the taxpayers in this town, are the school funding, the override, and the COVID learning loss, for sure.
As our conversation is winding down here, this is a moment to ask you, is there something that we haven't talked about? You want to take a moment to discuss, or maybe there's something we did talk about, but maybe you might want to circle back around and reemphasize something?
So really, I just want to really drive home the fact that our taxpayers need to be represented. Beyond being represented, they need to be respected. Some people will argue that they have been. They feel represented. Well, if they're saying that they don't feel represented, who is anyone else to tell them that they are? If they don't feel that they are, then they're not. But that's the way I look at it. I think that people need to respect each other. People need to respect each other's opinions. People need to really, as far as the funding goes, need to look at this objectively. Yes, everyone wants the school funded. Yes, school committee members are there to work to guarantee education and make sure that no student is left behind. That is a priority for me. That is very close to my heart. I'm someone that, as some people know already, I left high school in 2012, and I got my GED in 2014, which is the year I would have graduated. We need to make sure that no student is being left behind, that every student is treated fairly and respectfully, that every student's issues and shortcomings are being identified as early as possible so that they can be addressed, they can be dealt with, and no one is falling through the cracks. That's something that I'm very passionate about. That's something that I'm going to fight for. But at the same time, we need to make sure that our taxpayers feel represented and respected. That is something that is, it's a core value of our constitution, of our founding documents. You know, we've all heard before, no taxation without representation. Well, that means something to me. And it means something to a lot of people in this country, in this state, in this district, and in this town. It does mean something that shouldn't be lost to time. I think that the funding needs to be there. The students need to be treated appropriately. They, they need the funding that they need to be successful in life. We're here to take care of them and make sure that that happens. But ultimately, we need to make sure that it's being used appropriately and that this isn't a frivolous thing that we, so many people just keep saying, well, it's only gonna be $39 a month, right? Only $500 a year in property taxes. Everyone can afford that. Well, we're looking at a pandemic here. People have lost their jobs. People have lost their ways of life. Even before that, Hanson has a large retiree population on a fixed income. Who is anyone to say that any other person can afford anything? It's not right. It's not their place. It's, to me, it's extremely inappropriate, and I don't like to hear it. People, you can't assume anyone's situation. You really can't. Uh people, you can't assume anyone's situation. You really can't. To tell other people that they can afford something when they are being quite vocal about the fact that they have financial concerns. Again, people have lost their jobs and their ways of life. I- i- it's very troubling to me, very troubling. Again, the funding needs to be there, but we need to go about it the right way.
If folks want to reach out to you, they have more questions, or they want to talk to you or find out about your campaign, um what's some of the simple ways that they could do that?
Sure. So uh the easiest way is my email, uh Daniel W. Stroutman, my last name, S.T.R.A.U.T.M.A.N. at gmail dot com. Uh you can also go to my Facebook campaign page, just type in um uh Daniel W. Stroutman for uh school committee. It should come right up with a search. Um those are the two easiest ways to reach out to me. Um I think that, you know, uh really, I I want to talk to everyone. E- even if someone doesn't agree with all of my positions, even if we we may or may not come from the same faction, I I I think that we need to talk. Too many people on, you know, from certain positions just want to shut everyone down. They just want to, they want to disagree and they want to say, well, you don't, you don't believe in what I do. Well, I'm not gonna take you seriously or it just repeat our positions back in a mocking tone and act like, oh, no one could possibly believe that. Well, let's respect each other here. I want to talk to everyone. So I encourage people to reach out to me. I I I'd love to talk. I, you know, I'll I'll afford you the respect that you deserve, the respect that everyone deserves here.
Well, Daniel, thank you very much for joining us, sir.
Thank you for having me. It was great. Great to talk to you, Kevin.
And I want to thank you for tuning into these segments that we are having with the candidates. You are tuned into Frost Talk. This is the twenty twenty one candidates edition. If you are not aware as to what what your status is when it comes to voting, where to go to vote, any information like that, I encourage you to reach out to uh Town Hall, the town clerk's office, whether it's via email or a call, find out what the the protocol is, and they'll be able to best help you. Remember, the election's coming up on May fifteenth, not only for Whitman, not only for Hanson, but for both communities. Get out and vote. Thank you for tuning in. Until next time, have a great day.